Under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Looks like we've got a pretty good sized group here again tonight, so welcome everybody to the council meeting. We appreciate you coming out and taking part with us here. For those that are planning to speak tonight, the public hearing that was scheduled to rezone Stonewall Drive, the applicant's withdrawn their application, so we won't be having that public hearing tonight. If you want to speak in a citizen comment period, the sign up sheets are in the back of the room. Please sign up to speak in the citizen comment period, and before we get started on that, we'll explain the rules of the speaking. Item number three is to adopt our meeting agenda. We have two amendments to our agenda tonight. The first amendment will be to remove item number eight, given the applicant has withdrawn his application for rezoning. And then the second amendment adds two appointments for two candidates to the planning commission. That'll be items number 14 and 15. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Not the consenting agenda, the meeting agenda.
The meeting agenda. You're correct. Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you. Dr. Hostetter, you and Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Mr. Allen's not present tonight. Item number four is matters from the mayor. Just a couple of things. For those that came out to Riverfest last weekend, I think it was, great turnout. I think that's the largest crowd I've seen at a Riverfest since I've been in the city of Waynesboro. It was a great job by our public works department and all the organizers of that. And did I miss something over there? No, we're good. Okay. And then tonight, we've got a couple of proclamations, and you know, our police officers, this is Peace Officer Week, it's also Public Appreciation Week, and Business Appreciation Week. So just about every one of those that are getting proclamation are very important to our citizens in our community, police, public works, and our business community. So I wanted to thank all those before we get to the proclamations tonight. And that's all I have for matters from mayor. Item five is matters from council members.
Yeah, I'll just want to acknowledge our friends over at Basic City Beer Company and their well-earned Gold Medal World Beer Cup Award for Best Lager.
Best European Dark Lager. Get it right.
Right, Dark Lager, exactly. So to be recognized at that level, I think, just speaks volumes of all the hard work that they've been putting into the brewery and what it means to our city. So congratulations to them.
Perfect. Congratulations.
I was going to add that as well, but Mr. Short took care of it. So congratulations, those folks. COVID update. Our numbers have returned towards normal. If you looked at the Virginia Department of Health site, there was that statistical sort of blip, as I think some cases were reassigned to different municipalities, and that did seem to be simply statistical. It was not a real increase in cases, fortunately. And so our numbers the last week have been back down, averaging about three cases a day over the last seven days. So that is still good news, still not zero, but still good news that our numbers are low. In terms of the CDC County site, if you've been looking there, Virginia is almost all green, including Augusta County and the cities of within. There is one county to the southwest, and I admit, I never got back to the map to figure out which county that was, that has turned yellow. And I don't know what's going on down there, if that's where tech is or something else, that there are more people coming and going. But if you look at that national map, up in New England, up in New York State, there are a lot of counties that have been turning red in the last couple of weeks. So it is a reminder, as it is to me every day when I see patients getting out of the hospital, or folks that have recently had COVID, we're not done. So again, using common sense and good judgment, as the summer opens up and people are doing more, just continue to use common sense. There seems to be good evidence that boosters are protective. So if you've gotten your original vaccine but not your boosters yet, or booster, go ahead and get signed up to do that. If you've not gotten your original vaccine, there's still time. I mean, again, anytime you start to get it, you will be protected. So I encourage people to continue to work with their healthcare providers and find the ways to protect themselves and their families.
Thank you. Thank you, doctor. All right. Item number seven, oh no, item number six is to consider the consent agenda. Does everybody have an opportunity to review the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Short, thank you.
I will second that.
Dr. Hostetter, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Mr. Allen absent. Item number seven is to issue the following proclamations. A for Peace Officer Week. Mr. Hamp.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I think your remarks covered it, so if the council wants to identify the various proclamations and then issue all three by a simple motion, that'd be great.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion for Peace Officers Week, I mean, a motion.
That's correct.
We've got to do it separately?
No, you can do all three.
Okay. So we've got proclamation for Peace Officers Week, Public Work Appreciation Week, and Business Appreciation Week. Do we have a motion to approve all three proclamations? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Mr. Allen absent. All right. And then item number eight has been removed. Item number nine is to consider adopting an ordinance imposing taxes for the calendar year 2022. This item was introduced and seconded and discussed at our previous meeting. As such, unless there's any additional discussion, I'll call the question. Do we have a motion to pass item, or approve item number nine?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Is there a second? No second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Mr. Allen absent. Item number 10 is to consider adopting an ordinance amending section 30-58, section H, section three, section A and B, 66-3C, 86-28, and 86-139B, and F of the code of the city of Waynesboro. This is utilities. The same applies. This ordinance was introduced and seconded. We had discussion. Unless there's any additional questions, I'll call the question. Do we have a motion to approve item number 10?
You take this one later? I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Three ayes, one nay, and one absent. And then item number 11 is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating the annual budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. This ordinance was introduced, seconded, and discussed at our previous meeting. Unless there's additional discussion, I'll call the question. Do we have a motion to approve item number 11?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Williams, thank you.
I have a technical difficulty.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Mr. Allen absent. Item number 12 is to consider appointing a candidate for the Historical Commission for an unexpired, unexpired four-year term ending August 31, 2025. Mr. Robert Lambert is presented for consideration. Is there a motion to appoint Robert Lambert to the Historical Commission?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. One absent. Item number 13 is to consider reappointing Ms. Mary Powell to the Virginia Community Services Board to a three-year term ending June 30, 2025. Is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Mary Powell to the Community Services Board?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. One absent. Item number 14 is to consider appointing a candidate to the Planning Commission to a four-year term ending August 31, 2026. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Sherry Lambert to the Planning Commission to the term expiring August 26?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. One absent. Item number 15 is to consider appointing a candidate to the Planning Commission to an unexpired four-year term ending August 31, 2025. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Nick Zaharadney to the Planning Commission to a term expiring in 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I would just take a moment to just express, I think, our combined appreciation for all of the very talented and skilled and well-represented applicants that we had for this. It was a very difficult decision. There'll be additional appointments in the future, and I think it's just a testament to the work of the Planning Commission and the importance of that work, as demonstrated with the number of applications that we received. So just a heartfelt appreciation.
Yep. And I was going to say the same thing, but you worded it well. Thank you very much. That brings us to item number 16, which is correspondence, communications, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Nothing. Perfect. And then item number 17 is to have a citizen comment period. If you signed up and you wish to speak for the citizen comment period, you're entitled to four minutes to speak. The green light will come on indicating that you've started. About three and a half minutes into it, the yellow light will come on. Start winding your comments down, and then when the red light comes on, we kindly ask you to give up the podium and let someone else come up and speak. That said.
Yes, sir. Mr. Craig Scott.
Mr. Scott.
Good evening, good folks, councilmen and women, and vice mayor and mayor, and our esteemed Dr. Hostetter. I wasn't planning to speak on it. On the chicken coop issue, there are actually control available in current law. Basically, I'll give an extreme case. F-lines, obviously dangerous bacteria, et cetera. That will be covered under trespass, for example, under other properties or other areas. So that's a classic example of English common law, going back, obviously, Magna Carta and such. Also, there might be a liability the city might consider possibly of eminent domain if structures have to be moved or transported, just an aside. Now, what I wanted to talk about, and actually, my good friend Terry Short, we had talked about something similar. As you know, the Sunset Park passed, but again, I always like to raise consciousness, not taxes. So like the boondoggle, or at least my opinion, the industrial park that we have over by Delphine, by exit 96, if that is sold off, privatized as it were, it would no longer, it would raise cash, of course, for the city. Has to be worked out, obviously. All the i's need to be dotted and t's crossed. And then you would increase the tax base by having a good deal for bringing in whatever folks you decide to have there into the tax base. Well, Sunset Park is another example where that could be privatized with a covenant that have restrictions. We can optimize that. There are examples all over the world where we have parks that are run privately. There's something called, let's say, in Orlando, Disney World. They run their sewers and maintenance and everything else, run privately. And volunteers in the biking clubs and the nature people, and Lord knows, I have to lose weight, you can turn this in, maybe instead of charging them taxes, in compensation, they could keep the roads and the park clean, and it wouldn't cost the city a nickel. So the maintenance would be covered, liability might be limited, because they would take that purview, and it could be a win-win for the city. You bring in tourists that you had talked about, and things like that. Again, broadening and lowering the tax base, as I talked about in other city services, that go on and on, that can be handled optimally by the private sector. Also, a more holistic report, formation of the city. I mentioned Dr. Hostetter, who had, was grateful for his time after the meeting. Children, child trafficking, and I didn't have a chance to elaborate, but I will here. Child trafficking is a growing problem in the valley, in Waynesboro, and in other areas, modern-day slavery. With a shortage of police officers, where maybe there's four police officers able to cover with residents 22,000 and change, and people coming in and out of the city, God knows how many, four or 5,000 throughout the day, maybe more, especially, or even at night, we are short, and the city streets need to be made safe. That should be the highest priority for our, at least in my opinion, for our beloved town. I can go on about other suggestions, about cutting costs, bringing in more revenue, optimizing services. Again, compassionate, I know Dr. Hostetter and I disagree, but we respect each other's views, I believe, and are both on the same page in helping our town. That's why he's working hard after his long practice. There are ways of doing it. I believe we're using an archaic venue. Everything is state-centric, whether it's making a shirt or whatever, I implore you, a flag, the speakers that you have, is optimally done by the private sector through competitive bidding and continuous turnover. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Jerry Wilson.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for hearing me. What I want to talk about is automobile tax, and thank you for the reduction. Back in February 2020, I purchased a brand-new car, and then in December of that same year, December 29, I was in an automobile accident in Charlottesville, where the car was totaled. I was in the hospital for three days. And then when, of course, the first of the year rolled around, and the car was still in my name, but it was already in the junkyard, already being processed by the insurance company, and it was taken out of my name on January the 4th of 2021. But yet, I was still charged the full bill. What I was wondering, if you all would look at, at some type of deduction in people that might be in that type of situation within, let's say, the last week of December, getting their car totaled, and then presenting all the paperwork within, by a certain date in January. I'm not saying give them a complete tax break, but at least, you know, maybe a 25% reduction or something like that. It's just a common sense thing to help people, and like myself, I'm on a fixed income, and so, yeah, I had a nice car and everything, and I expected to pay taxes, but when it was completely totaled at that time, I was a little upset that I had to pay the full amount. But that's, I'm just asking you to look at something like that and see what you say. I appreciate your time, appreciate your efforts, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry. Could you, one quick question. Have you spoken to Ms. Beveridge about?
I did call the office, and I was told there's nothing they could do.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Evelyn Cotton.
Good evening. I just came in in time to hear y'all talking about the chickens and the roosters, so I signed up quickly. Yeah, I just still want to reiterate, I love that I can hear the rooster crow, and I have a neighbor with a ton of chickens. They are pets, and she has a name for every single one of them, and she is well over 25. I would just urge you to consider grandfathering in more than 25, in excess of those limits, for people. Chickens don't live but so long, and, you know, let it be a standard of, are they named? If they're named, they're pets. And maybe put a limit on how many per square foot, because, you know, she's got ample room for those chickens, and she has birds that other people wouldn't take. They would just be somebody's probably not-so-good meal at this point. Because, I mean, she has birds that are missing toes and feathers and blind and things that, you know, she's just taken them in, and that some of them are that way, and then others are just pets. But they're all wonderful, they're very handleable, and she puts them to as much use, and they're of real value to the community as far as the school system and educating our children. And so, I mean, I can't imagine how cool it would have been if I had taken a tour of her chickens, her chicken area while I was young. It certainly made an impression on me as an adult, but I just think it's wonderful for the kids to be able to see that. And it's a shame it's not just outside the city limits, but it's already there, it's already in the city limits, and I, again, just hate to see people have to give up what are essentially pets. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Cheryl Carey.
Hello, Cheryl Carey, 820 Fairway. I just wanted to talk about, well, several things, but Sunset Park. At the last meeting, we discussed whether or not to approve the park, and it got approved. I didn't want the money to go to the park while we still have homeless children. As long as there's one homeless children, someone homeless, you shouldn't go to a park where we have plenty of them. We have infrastructure problems, and we have parks that I've now learned that aren't being maintained. I learned the soccer baseball field, they were promised a slide that isn't fixed, and I'm sure there's other problems. Have you budgeted to fix these problems before you go ahead with this park? If you want to, if you can't maintain what we have, how are you going to maintain a park up on a hill, $2 million plus? What really irked me at the last meeting was when I found out that only about eight of the 23 people who were for this park live here. I guess it's in the bylaws, it's something that says anyone can talk, but why should someone who doesn't live here, who doesn't pay taxes, have a voice in our family? I don't believe they should. It's almost like it was planned, bring in a crowd. If you not live here, you should not be telling us, the citizens, what to do with our money, unless we ask for your opinion, or if we have done something to a city, garbage, whatever, and they say, hey, we have a problem. But for other people to come in here and tell us what to do with our taxes, our free money, whatever, I don't think it's right. So if it is a bylaw, I want to change it. I don't want people coming into our city and unbalancing us as to what actual citizens who live here want. I don't go where they are unless it's a problem. I don't think people should be packing it, so. And I want us to maintain what we have now. Let's fix and do the promises we promised for parks and that before we go ahead. I already discussed last time how the police, I feel, we need more. I don't want us to become, and it's so easy for it to flip, like these democratic cities that have defunded. And I wanted to know, have we gone to cities where they've fired, laid off police, who are certified, and had some incentive packages to see if they want to come here? We don't have to start brand-new with a 20-year-old. Let's start with someone who has, who's got fired. We're short, we're having more people. I don't even know 90% of the problems we have here. I've heard of a little bit of it. That's just the tip. There's problems here. I don't want to get blown out like it's out of control in other places. I also see somewhere we had a thing with storm drains. Every fall, the leaves are in the street. This is the first time, this last fall, that I actually saw a sign that says, don't put them in the street. They put them in the street all the time, they go down the drains. I sent a video of a landscaping company shoveling it in the storm drain. That same company, this spring, did it again. So let's get ahead of it this time. Put a banner up, put more signs up, ticket people, no, not ticket, put signs on their doors, go around when they're doing garbage or something, get the leaves out of the street. If you think it's a problem, let's take care of it. Let's not just keep spending money on the storm drains and saying something. We see the leaves in the street all the time. It's coming up five months. My other thing is, am I done?
Yeah, your turn.
I'm done. Do we have a beautification committee? Because we need some landscaping.
That would be through Parks and Rec.
So we don't have it?
You'd have, I don't know.
One tourist, we got it pretty up this place.
That's it.
That's it.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's, thank you all very much for your comments. Item number 18 is to move to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move this meeting be recessed, and that the City Council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting for the following purposes: to discuss the acquisition of real property for public purpose as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by our attorney relating to a real property as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8, and discuss the relocation or expansion of business or industry where no previous announcement has been made as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A5.
Thank you, ma'am. The vice mayor has made a motion to move to closed session. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
A roll call, I think.
A roll call.
Roll call? Ms. Bortles.
Mr. Henderson?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Captain Short?
Aye.
Captain Hostetter? Aye.
We're in closed session.
Is there a motion to return to, Sir, open session and clarify the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the following resolution, where as the City Council of Waynesboro has convened a closed meeting at this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where as section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this City Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that to the best of each members' knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
Is there a second to Ms. Williams' motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Boardle, roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion carries four oh. Now, item number seventeen. Item number seventeen. Is there a motion for adjournment?
We're going to sit here all night because Bruce isn't here.
Can we phone a friend?
I will make that motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Doctor.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. This meeting is adjourned.